So I'm opening the, this planning board meeting this evening, February 3rd, 2020, at the Deerfield Town Hall, 3 Conway Street in South Deerfield. It is 6:30. I think that we had a bit of a scattered start because of a quorum issue, but we're all here. Maybe everybody can introduce themselves. I'm Rachael Blain, chair this evening.
Kip Kamosa.
Roger Stidowsky.
Maxine.
So we have four people. Three are absent this evening, but four is a quorum. I think maybe if all are agree- in agreement, we'll go to the A and R first. Do you mind?
That is fine.
Our evening program is to, we have three public hearings.
Max, you want to see the A and R on South West Street?
We have public hearings, we have some old business, and we have this A and R. If we attend to the A and R, we'll be in better shape. So, tell us about this project.
Tell us about this project. My name is Randy Isar. I'm from Harold Eaton Associates from Hadley. The project is on West Street. The owner is Bill Erman and his wife. It's very cut and dry, 100 feet of frontage. I don't know what, I can't remember what the area is, but I know it meets zoning. Everything on the plan meets the zoning requirements. The main reason I'm here is because, if you look at that plan, everything is in color, which is not typical. It is a land court plan. So they want their plans in a certain way after the board signs it. I have to send it to Boston. They will draw up a different plan, and it gets recorded in the registry of deeds in the land court department, not the regular registry.
So Randy, on here it shows actually an old lot line. So the original lot was this portion.
Correct.
You're moving this lot line over here.
Yes.
So you're creating just this lot, and then all of this, this line will go away.
Right. And the remainder will stay with the house.
Want to look at this, Rachael?
Yeah.
The slot line is, is going away. The new lot line's here, so this is 100 by whatever. Even though we endorse it, we don't really, there's a disclaimer saying, you know, we're not saying it's a building law anyway, so.
Renewal's not approved.
Any questions?
So this is the, this is, it's just quite compared here. Yep. All of them.
Bill Erman.
Bill Erman.
I make a motion that we approve this A and R for William Erman on West Street.
Second in?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Post. Stained, so the, the A and R is endorsed, 4-0-0. Looks like, I think I'm supposed to check and make sure that the fees have been paid.
Start signing, Maxine.
You want to sign them all in the same position?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just skip the top lots.
The senior member.
Here, pass them down and just.
I wish that was that easy. A, B.
Make sure the amount's good, then.
One other, is there somebody here named Sparta? No? That was somebody who had a question that they wanted to bring before the board?
I do.
Okay, the next thing that we, I think we're all set, Randy. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming back.
I will take that.
Yeah. Yep, 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 yep. You have that? Yeah, yeah. Doesn't say the fee.
Randy, did you, did you drop off a check for that?
I delivered it to Town Hall.
It's not, it's not, yeah.
Just received it, it says it was paid.
Yeah. So we'll have to check on that.
I can't believe he didn't do it, because I told him that's what he needed to do.
Yeah.
And if he took it, I'll have to get paid. They are remiss.
We will check in with him about that. So, before I go on, we have a public hearing that was before us, on our agenda, presented to us by the offices. I have no, I have no public notification of it. I don't have any confirmation of the public hearing.
You were told the town, the town is admitted in December, you know, if it's prepared or anything, so.
He's getting to me.
Did you talk to the town?
Yeah, and you have a ZBA meeting on the 13th?
You just don't have a copy of the public notice?
I don't have a public, a public notice copy. I have for both other public hearings.
You have a copy of that with you?
We don't have a public.
By any chance, I could see now that the.
I have a ZBA here, I just have a bill of payment.
Yeah, first things first, right? I don't have anything to read.
I know.
And that is awkward. And I did ask to put that in, because I wasn't aware of this, although we did talk about it last time.
I know it was in the paper.
You saw it in the paper, I know. It's not with the other two, that's why I don't have.
Yeah, I saw it in the paper also.
I know, I just don't have a copy of it.
But the town did it, did you do it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no. If you saw it, it's there. The town did it. I didn't see it, so that's, that's on me, but at the same time, I don't. I guess what we, we can do is open the public hearing.
Just.
And read it, that we're going to open a public hearing pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5, Monday, February 3rd. We're starting at 6:40 at the Town Hall in South Deerfield, Lake Conway Street, on a proposed zoning variance?
No. Site plan review.
Site plan review.
Site plan review. You can just, that's not much, but you can read the owner's name.
Oh, okay. A site plan review by the, the proposal is by Roger Allen. It is for 6 North Street in South Deerfield. And your, the surveyor, Proterra Design, do you have somebody from them? Are you there? Would you want to come forward and talk to us about that? And then let us know what your plan is? That's just in this hall here. Is that it?
Do you guys want to get a copy of the plan, or do you want to just wait and see theirs?
No.
Max, won't you give me that and roll that up for me?
So the zoning district is C1. It's map 168, Lot Parcel 115. Alteration and expansion of an industrial site.
Do I need to speak into here? Can this come out?
Uh, no. No. We can.
I'll stick, I'll get.
More important than we hear you, you can, yeah. Talk us through it.
My name is Jesse. I'm with Proterra Design Group, here representing Renaissance Builders. They're the audience here, along with representatives of the owner, and also the architect as well. We're here before you for a site plan review for a proposed 3,000 square foot building addition to 6 North Street.
3,000 square foot addition?
Yep, 3,000 square foot addition. The existing building is a 12,000 square foot warehouse facility that's located just to the south of what used to be Deerfield Valley Refab. I guess it's a gory, maybe a gory fabrication now. So we're just, just to the west of the railroad tracks there, to the north of the vacant lot, to the south of us, where just south of that, I believe, is a barbecue spot. So really, this, this company here, Smith Interconnect, they are a leading provider of electronic components and RF products. You may have heard the name Militech in the past. They have that technology. They're, that's one of their technology brands, so they have a long history here in town. What they're looking to do is expand the building, like we said, and it's going to be adding about, you know, four or five new jobs. And the existing site is existing non-conforming from the standpoint of, it's a half acre lot. It's mostly all developed. In the front, and I'll show you up here. So we're that, the blue square in the middle there, and you can see the building is almost the entire parcel there now.
Why don't you see if you've got enough lead if you want to stand by your thing?
Yeah, I can try to do that.
A little bit.
Well, I think you do.
Keep going. Here he comes. You're messing with his stuff.
Sir?
Sorry about that.
So here we are here. Here's the existing half acre site. The yellow here is the existing building. This is currently paved asphalt here. There's a couple of sheds to the, to the front. Parking now is, there's about four or five spaces on the front. And this gravel lot here to the south, they currently lease, lease this, it's about 24,000 square feet of this, I believe they lease for the majority of the parking. This is kind of what it looks like in the front. What they're proposing here is a building expansion to the west, which is in this direction. The beauty here is no new impervious. We're actually going to be able to take out some asphalt, replace it with roof. They're only adding about four employees, which is a good thing, but it's not going to be a lot of traffic change here. The, what we are able to do is put some compliant parking in the front. We're looking to do that. Here, this is the proposal. So we're looking to put some parallel parking on the front. We'll be able to have a handicap parking spot. Again, the orange here is a 3,000 square foot addition, and we're pushing into the area that was all previously paved. As far as services, water, sewer, electric, those are all adequate for this facility now and the expansion, so we don't need to, to upgrade any of those, any of those facilities. The earth of servants here, again, is in the front. It's about 11,500 square feet. There is one small change to this plan, which I will share. The owner and architect need a change to one of the egress doors, and I will submit Even more copies if you need it, but really, the only change here was a change right now on the north side of the building. They're proposing an egress door, and basically that door swung around here to the front. So pretty minor change, but we wanted to bring that to your attention. To get a little bit more perspective here on what the proposal is, we have it in front of you there, but I think the architect's rendering here does suggest that you understand what's going on. The existing building sort of has yellow color here, and again, we're proposing this 25 by 119 square foot addition off the front, kind of that orange, orange tinge. There's no real change in use here, very minimal change in, in traffic. We do not expand the utilities, so we're able to get the new jobs here, the expansion, without much more change to the.
How, you're, you mean no new traffic relative to your business?
Yeah, they're, they're adding about four, I'm saying not a significant increase. They're adding about four employees.
So, but employee traffic only, there's, what is the, what would be the manufacturing or, you know, what kind of traffic do you have now for the?
I think it's pretty minimal. Shouldn't even see any traffic, some sort of traffic or, or freight items for the facility and materials being for manufacturer and warehouse.
So the shipping receiving is, that, that pattern of traffic will stay the same?
Yes. We've got curves on the side here now, not remaining on the south side.
Just the trucks will be full?
We expect to keep them full.
Okay.
On the way out, we'll go on the way in.
So what is you, you're going before the ZBA on the 13th for also for the variance in?
No variance. So we're, it's an existing non-conforming use, and there's a provision in our zoning to allow, to allow us to go for a special permit to alter that use.
So it's a change of use?
Not a change of use, it's just altering an existing non-conforming use.
Altering is existing, so that's different than changing is altering?
Correct. Yep. It's an industrial business warehouse use now, it's going to continue to that, but an alteration or extension.
Because you've altered the building?
Yep, it required an extension.
Same, same bil, same use, same?
Same use, yep.
Are you not seeking relief from ZBA for the amount of coverage for the property?
Well, it's existing non-conforming in the way that we understand the zoning and in consultation with the building department, and seeing the most appropriate approach was to use this provision of the, of the bylaw, which allows for that special permit to occur under that. Because it's already non-conforming, they make a determination through the special permit process whether that's considered a detriment or an expansion of that use.
So you're not seeking relief from the town setbacks?
No. In the table, the current setbacks are 20 feet, but there is a provision in the table that the, I believe the building department.
We were, we were advised by the building department.
Can you, can you introduce yourself, sorry?
I'm Steve Greerall from Renaissance Builders.
Could you come up here?
Yeah, maybe better if you come up. Thanks, Kip.
So, in your zoning table, there's a footnote, and because the existing building to the north of us is so close to the property, about seven feet, there's, you could do an expansion and average the buildings here to determine what a reasonable setback is, and that's what we're attempting to do here.
We were advised by the building inspector that that's how we should proceed.
Hmm.
And request a special permit for the zoning board.
So again, we haven't been in front of them yet, and that's, remains to be seen, but.
So, so what you're proposing is approximately five parallel parking spots along the street?
There's four. There's four proposed, and the remaining, by statute, would be 30 total spaces, although I think they use much less, they use about half of that. They have about 16 vehicles plus four transient spaces that they use for visitors, so they're only using about 20 with the expansion, but we have enough for 26 leased spaces here based on their agreement now. And we have four in the front that we're able to make some improvements, pay them, stripe them. Right now, they're not striped. They're too steep for ADA access, so we're able to make those improvements.
I don't believe that we have any provisions in our zoning bylaws to allow for leased parking.
Well, that's the way it is now.
It might be the way, but it's, you know. You're for us looking to expand on something, and I understand that it's non-conforming, but you want to make it worse. And, you know, there are situations where, you know, you're going to have parallel parking, which they're barely the size of a legal parking spot. And then when the highway department goes along and plows, you know, there's a chance they could, they're either going to hit the cars or bury the cars, or they're not going to be able to plow the road, because your cars are going to be parked in the road.
The cars aren't parked in the road. Cars are on our.
Well, you only have 13 feet from the building to the property.
Right. All the spaces are on property.
All right. You might, you might fit a car, but you'll never get out of one side of it, is what I'm saying.
That's the way it is now, so.
No, it's not the way it is now, because you're putting a 26-foot wide addition on the front of that building. Correct.
Correct, correct.
So don't tell me it's the same, because it's not, because now you can drive straight in and park there.
Right, but they still have to remove, you still, whether or not the town plows here or not, you still have to plow that front spot, so I guess I don't.
I guess what Kip is trying to say is, if that leased land property goes away, it's going to be a worse condition. Now, at least you have some parking in the front. Maybe you don't utilize it at this given moment, but you could, and at some point in time, that lot might get developed. I see what he's trying, where he's going with this.
Well, it's, no, it's, it's not just that, but they, they have parking spots there that, you know, yes, you can fit the car there, but.
I understand if they put any shrubbery or any snow or whatever.
Right, it'll be useless.
Yeah.
But also, it's, you know, they don't have parking spaces. They say they're leasing, but.
Yeah, that can go away tomorrow. I don't know what their term, the agreement is.
But our bylaws say you have to have on-site parking. That's not on-site parking, so.
Right.
Kip, we have, we have.
Well, that, if that's a concern, it's certainly something we can look at. Maybe you could point me in here, but I did not see where it specifically says it has to be on-site parking, but, you know, I have my book, but I'm.
Yeah, it's back here.
Pretty sure.
I think it's more like a common sense thing, because obviously, it probably is, but it doesn't make sense, you know, to depend on leased property. This building's not going to go away, that property, the agreement could disappear.
Well, they have a lease now. It's through 2022.
That's correct.
And they have the ability to maintain that. They need to do that for their, their use. You know, this, this building's, you guys have been here for 20 years, right?
We have.
You know, it's, it's always operated like this. I understand what you're saying, but.
I think like two years ago, they did a bunch of major renovations to that building.
To this building?
Yes.
On the interior.
Yeah, on the interior. Yeah, the footprint didn't change.
Yeah, we re- retrofitted the interior.
Yeah.
So updates in our current manufacturing needs.
Yeah.
So our concerns are parking, our concerns are, the impervious surface is not impacted, although it's already non-conforming, so it's not, because you're building onto already impervious surface.
Yeah, and we looked at all sorts of different low impact developments like that, but there just isn't space between to really do anything. I mean, any kind of meaningful infiltration, you need to be at least 10 feet off.
Right.
The building. There really isn't the opportunity there.
Yeah.
I, we do have a slight decrease overall. There's a lot of broken pavement down here. We're kind of going to clean that up. You know, we're changing from asphalt to roof now, which is by definition cleaner. You know, this building doesn't support any kind of green roof or anything like that. It's a warehouse manufacturing, so it's good to look at some of those things. They're just not usable in this case. So that's why we asked for the waiver for shared compliance with that.
And I'm just looking, I can't, I did find the, the notice for the ZBA, and you're asking them, doesn't say, just for the expansion, not to the left side. So.
Did you find it there? I don't, I didn't see where it says it has to be.
Okay.
Well, it, it does, but it says that, you know, you can apply for a special permit to reduce the parking.
Reduce the parking. So that's.
Isn't that your business, I believe might fall under the heading as research and development manufacturing or something of that nature?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it's something we can bring up with the ZBA. Like you said, it's a, you know, that special permit's pretty wide that, that are asked there under that extension of a non-conforming use. If your concern is the leased parking, we can certainly bring that up with them.
Yeah, and how many square feet is the existing building? 12,000?
12,000, about 12,000.
You know, with the, the addition is another.
Three, so about 15,000.
15,000. So how many parking spaces is that?
30, right?
30.
For 500 or.
30, it's supposed to have 30.
Right.
And like I said, they, they lease about, what is it, 24,000 square feet, something like that, from.
Do they bring one?
Do they bring one? Now, so as far as having enough for those, that's plenty for that, as far as that's concerned.
Right. So that is our major concern, is the parking.
One of them, yeah. I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, we, not to get ourselves in a pickle, I mean, can you imagine us trying to sell the Dollar General people, well, they're going to park over there, you know?
On leased land. I think if, if we. I think if, if we, and we can, um, propose this to bump it along to the ZBA too, in terms of changing the parking, that that's something that they have to consider, do we consider that too?
Well, it's definitely part of the site plan.
Site plan review, yeah.
So, um...
Well, that's...
That's why I don't know, I don't understand how that works, if you're not going to seek a variance or something, just a special permit, how would that deal with the parking, because we're the board that deals with that? If you don't like our, say, if we should decide that you don't have adequate parking, then you could go to the ZBA.
Maybe at that, maybe at that point...
That's what I think.
We could seek a variance there, or, you know, we could ask them, but, um...
So at this given moment, the setbacks, though, from the property lines, do you meet any of them?
Uh, we don't, uh, only to the north.
Only to the north?
Yep.
Oh, just to the north?
Your building already is too close to the...
Yeah, yep.
Both sides.
I'm not sure of those three there, where did it used to be?
On your side of the road.
Isn't there a loading dock on the back of that building too, and that's not even on your property?
No.
But you don't use that loading dock?
Um, I believe it's shared with, with Cory here, I'm not sure, they, I mean, they have an agreement with him, with Mr. Cory, on the east side?
Yep, that's correct.
So right now, you, you don't meet the setback from North Street?
Well, the current building's...
Yeah, the current building isn't.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, the current building is...
The current building does.
From North Street.
Right.
Yes.
From, from north.
Right.
Right.
Not, not from the other side.
Right, so in that sense, you're making it more nonconforming.
Again, in, in the table, we're allowed, based on our reading and discussion with the building inspector, we're allowed to expand this to an average of the buildings next to us, so we don't think we need a variance for that. Uh, that may, you know, we got to see what the ZBA says, but that's, we're not, you know, we're not saying we're not meeting this year.
When you say the building inspector, who you've been dealing with, I know we're in the process of changing...
The new...
Bob.
Bob, okay, I didn't...
Yeah.
That was his read of the table?
Yeah, I'm just asking, I didn't, because I didn't know who they were dealing with.
I went to him and asked him, you know, here's what the, the Smiths would like to do, they want to stay in town, they want, they need to expand for their business to grow.
I'm sure the town wants to keep him here.
The town wants to keep him here?
Right.
How, how do we, how do we proceed? And proceeding as we were advised by him. Which was to seek the route.
Yep.
With the zoning and also go to apply for both planning and the zoning areas at the same time.
Right.
It's too bad he's not here tonight.
Yeah, and, and he, he's got no comment, which is discouraging on, he, on his, on the...
Right, he did, I saw that before.
He's not, he made no comment, and I think, um, no comment on concerns at this time.
He should have some opinion on it, so he should have some comment, I would think.
Yes, no, I agree, I think that if he's already weighed in with you, which is, um, this is Bob Walden, our, um, building inspector, and I think we're going to need to consult with him before we go much further. Um, and I think that we should, um, some of us, and I'd be willing to be there, be at the zoning board just to hear this the, further through to the next step, so that, um, we have a clearer vision of what it is that... These, these things often fall in between our two boards, um, and if, um, we were looking down the road in December at this, more clearly, we might have made a joint hearing, just so that we could address these concerns together. But I think at this point, for us to continue the hearing until potentially the twenty-fourth, if that's a date that we could... Max, are you free on the twenty-fourth? Any chance?
What day is that?
It's a Monday.
That's a Monday.
It would be an equal...
Equal scary thing, right?
Yeah.
Equal chance, well, Bo, uh, John will be back by then, and, and Mary and Paul, whoever, but I think, and that doesn't necessarily in place of our March meeting, it's just in addition to our March meeting to clean up some of these things and continue them. And I, I, that would be a week after you've met with the, um, ZBA, and it would give us a chance to talk to Mr., um, Wal- Walden?
Walden.
Walden, Walden, um, about his concerns, or non-concerns, as it turns out, maybe, but what his take is, what his read is on the...
Maybe we can call that.
Which one? That's what I'm saying, so we continue to the twenty-fourth?
We're talking about the meeting at seven o'clock?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
So that would be my, that's my, anybody else thinking how about to...
I think so, I...
Okay, so if somebody would like to make a motion to continue this meeting to the twenty-fourth?
I'll make that motion, to continue to, um, tentatively, or we should have a, your date, you want to say twenty-fourth?
The twenty-fourth, I'm, I'm, I'm putting a stake down on the twenty-fourth of February. Um, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained, so if I have continuing papers to sign to, to the twenty-fourth?
And just, just, um, just to reiterate, your main concern is the parking on the, on the leased lot?
And the, and the, the continuation of a nonconforming lot to create something that is, mm...
Right.
Equally complex, less conforming.
Because from our, from this board's point of view, there's a couple, there's several things, one is the lack of parking, uh, the lack of, uh, you know, distance from the building to the property line, the entire size of the building on the lot, all of those are nonconforming. And I understand that there are some provisions that can be looked at in different light, but, you know, um...
But I guess those are more zoning concerns.
Correct.
I would say, I would agree with you, parking, that's in our purview, so that...
And they're not unrelated, but we want to, I, I think this is a good thing for us to actually check with, uh, Bob Walden before we go too much further, um, some of us will be at the, the thirteenth, the hearing on the thirteenth, to see this further down the road, hear the concerns there, um, and then we'll see you again here on the twenty-fourth. Excellent, thank you, and I've got to, I need you to sign this, the continuation, continuation.
Six o'clock?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven works better for us, doesn't it? Yes, seven o'clock, thank you for that, so that'll be, uh, February twenty-fourth.
You want me to sign, or you want the applicant to sign?
Probably better if the applicant is the applicant, yeah, 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 yep. Great, okay, um...
Twenty-fourth?
The twenty-fourth, and, um, then we have, um, Chris, we're going to, we didn't have a quorum at six o'clock? For the, um, we're going to open the public hearing, um, for the, to review the floodplain bylaw, but we're going to continue that as well, we didn't have a quorum at six when that was, so, um, that's going to be my call right now, is to continue that. Yes, but I, could you stick around for the, that would be great, um... So let me, uh, at this point, open, um, another public hearing. Um, public hearing pursuant to MGL, Chapter forty A, Section five, um, this evening, Monday, February fifteenth, uh, third, excuse me, two thousand and twenty, at seven, ten, um, at Deerfield Town Hall, eight Conway Streets, South Deerfield. Um, opening a pub, we are opening a public hearing on proposed amendments to the floodplain, thank you, uh, district zoning bylaw. The proposed amendments update the floodplain regulations and clarify the uses that are permitted, prohibited, and permitted by special permit in the floodplain district. The full text of the floodplain bylaw can be found on the, uh, town website, um, and paper copies can be attained, obtained, excuse me, at Deerfield Town Clerk's Office here during normal business hours. Um, however, it's my intention at this point to, because we're, we missed that six o'clock time, and there may be people who have already left for that, we're going to continue that mi- public hearing as well, um, and we will continue it till, until the twenty-fourth as well, um, to the meeting that date, um, February twenty-fourth at seven o'clock, beginning at seven o'clock. Can I get a motion to continue that meeting?
I make a motion to continue that public hearing until the twenty-fourth of February at seven o'clock?
Yes, second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Paul, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Roger, all right, so that's four zero zero, we'll continue the floodplain, um, district zoning bylaw, and... But there are paper copies available, it, um, it's worth a read, and I will work on that as we go on. We have a third public hearing this evening, uh, that we're going to open, um, this public hearing, um... Again, um, pursuant to MGL, Chapter forty A, Section five, on tonight, um, Monday, February third, two thousand and twenty, here at the Deerfield Town Hall, eight Conway Street, South Deerfield, Massachusetts, on proposed bylaws, zoning bylaws, proposed by Gogris LLC. The text of said document can be inspected at the town hall, has been here, the proposal would consolidate now separate bylaws for medical and non-medical marijuana operations, authorize product manufacturing in the RA district on parcels of five acres or more when co-located with a licensed cultivation operator, and make certain other clarifying amendments. So, Attorney Evans?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're on. Oh, thank you, yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair, my name is Richard Evans, I'm counsel for, uh, Gogris, uh, LLC, who is the proponent of the amendment before you tonight. Uh, as you know, I have also been here many times representing, uh, Suns Mass Inc., um, but I, I, every time I've appeared, I've represented one or the other, I think, but, but not myself. Um, I'm, I'm very pleased to be joined tonight by, uh, representatives from the companies who are, the Gogris, Gogris is the owner of the land at one ninety-eight Middle Village Road that used to be Pioneer Gardens, that, that greenhouse operation of theirs. And, uh, uh, and Suns Mass is their tenant, as you know, who obtained a special permit, um, and they will be operating the facility. So I, I, we're here tonight on behalf of Gogris, the landowner, because it's the landowner who has standing to request a change in zoning under Section five of thirty-eight. Uh, I'm joined tonight by a number of representatives from the company, uh, this is my, my colleague, Mike Cutler, closest to me, uh, Dr. Noel Palmer, who is the chief scientist for Harvest Inc., the company, the, the parent company of Suns Mass, um, John, um, Lethrow, who is a security, he's doing handling, security at this site. Uh, Martin, Martin Coronado is the cultivation director, uh, at the end is my colleague, Don Dubenborf, you know, from Waynes Town. Uh, we also have Blake Gilmore, um, who's, uh, works for Harvest, he's a Deerfield guy, and, uh, next to him is Peter Davies, and then two Blakes left, Ali Kirkpatrick, who you'll hear from later, who is the, uh, Director of Governmental Affairs for the company. I'd like to take a minute, if I could, um, Madam Chair, to give some background and context, because what we're proposing here is something you probably don't see very often, a rather long, uh, well, five or six pages, um, uh, proposal to amend the zoning, and, and, uh, it's, it's a slightly, uh, odd situation that someone would come and request a, a, a zoning change to that extent, and I'd like to explain why it is we're doing that now, so that you and, and other Deerfield residents who, I hope, will be watching this, will have a better understanding of what brings us here tonight, and what this is really all about. So to, by way of background, let me observe that, uh, we can go back to two thousand and twelve, which was the beginning of, of major changes in marijuana law in the state of Massachusetts. That's when the voters of the, the state passed the decriminalization initiative, which Deerfield itself passed, approved by sixty-six percent. The gist of that provision was that people wouldn't get arrested for having small quantities of pot, really came down to that. And, um, uh, that, it did not require any adjustments in local law, to my knowledge, uh, in fact, the only impact on the town was probably that the police had less work to do, and, um, and, um, and citizens, of course, more importantly, were protected from the prospect of being arrested for small amounts of marijuana. So in two thousand and twelve, as you know, there was another initiative on the statewide ballot, uh, it was for, uh, medical marijuana. Uh, Deerfield voters supported that as well by a vote of fifty-nine percent. Um, and after the two thousand and twelve medical marijuana initiative, uh, this board labored to develop a set of, of bylaws, which became Section forty-six fifty in, in your, in your current bylaws, it was a medical marijuana bylaw, uh, which among other things, uh, named the Select Board as the Special Permit Granting Authority. And it was, it was pursuant to that bylaw, the medical marijuana bylaw, that Suns Mass came in a few years ago and requested a special permit, uh, for medical marijuana operations, which was granted. Now we go to two thousand and sixteen, when the, the Massachusetts voters approved the Full Adult Legalization Initiative by a significant margin, and Deerfield approved that one by fifty-five percent, which was about statewide, actually. And, um, and so this board, uh, as you call, once again, went back to the, uh, to the drawing boards and, and developed rather assiduously, I, as I was there and I observed the process, uh, developed a non-medical or adult or so-called recreational marijuana bylaw, which took, which became, uh, Section forty-six sixty in the, uh, in your, in your zoning bylaws in Deerfield, and it named the Planning Board, of course, as the Special Permit Granting Authority. And, and since that time, I know the board has entertained a number of applications from various entities for, for approval of, for special permits for special, for marijuana operations. Well, as you also recall, uh, you've seen a lot of me, I was here at many of the hearings for Suns Mass and Gogris and, and some of the other places, and, 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 and watched and observed you develop the bylaw. So one thing I've observed is that, um... Is, is, is that, um, there are a number of things that the, the, this board observed, and, uh, what, what this board went through in trying to adapt to significant changes in the law that legalization represents, and to get a grasp on just how Deerfield should control the use of land to accommodate this new industry, but to control the use of land in a way that properly protects the public health and the public safety and the character of the community, which is, of course, the point of zoning in the first place. So one of the things I've observed is that, uh, and I think most people agree with this, is that it really, in the long run, doesn't make a lot of sense to have two sections about marijuana in the bylaws, I mean, it's the same plant, there's no, there's no biological or, uh, 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 other scientific distinction between medical marijuana and non-medical marijuana, it's the same plant, and so it's really, doesn't make a lot of sense to have two sets of laws for them. Similarly, it, uh, probably doesn't make a lot of sense to have the Special Permit Granting Authority to be the Select Board in one and the Planning Board in the other. Uh, there were some ambiguities in, uh, the adult law, especially like, like the two-thousand-foot buffer zone between retail zones. We, we, we talked about whether that meant two thousand feet within the town of Deerfield or not, and it was, wasn't quite clear. And we spent a lot of time during the special permit process, uh, for Suns Mass, talking about whether APR land should be deemed impervious and considered or not considered in determining, um, the, um, square footage of a building that was allowable square footage. Um, and there was a lot of talk over the last year or two about, uh, changing, or, or reforming, or updating Deerfield's zoning bylaws, um, making, you know, consolidating those two changes, two parts into one, and making some other changes. And then about last fall, or last, yeah, I guess last fall, uh, my client, um, approached me about the possibility of, of doing, uh, so-called product manufacture, or product preparation, or making things that is extracting, compounding, blending, that sort of thing, making marijuana products at this site, I explained to him that no, um, zoning didn't allow for it, cultivation, but not product, uh, manufactured. And, uh, the only way to approve that, that use of the land would be through a zoning change. So knowing that you folks were strongly interested in changing the zoning bylaws and rewriting them, basically, to consi- in changing the zoning bylaws and rewriting them, basically, to consolidate those two sections, it seemed to me, taking into account that that's where you were, and I heard many grievances expressed in this room about the lack of staff and the administrative burden that you were suffering under, and given the fact that I'm fairly familiar with zoning, and that I'm familiar with what Deerfield has gone through, and that I'm also familiar, as it happens, with the new marijuana law, having, among other things, been on the committee that wrote it, it seemed to me that I was, and being a good neighbor, I was in a position to help the town out. And so, and I had another dilemma I was facing here, and that is if I came back with a little tweak to the existing zoning bylaw to accommodate product manufacture, well, then by the time we got to town meeting, the existing bylaw might be on the chopping block, and there wouldn't be anything left to tweak. And so I didn't want to run into that problem. So it occurred to me that, as you know, and I came and bounced this off you several times, why don't I just do what you're going to propose to do anyway, and I'll consolidate the two separate sections into one, fix these other little things, tighten it up a little bit, suggest to it, and hopefully save you a lot of work and meet my clients' needs as well. So I came back to you, and I did that, I drafted a new bylaw, or new sections, I'm not saying a new bylaw, and submitted drafts to you, starting, I think, in September, October, somewhere there. And I've circulated these drafts very widely and tried to solicit as much input as possible from a number, from everybody I can find. And I've got some good suggestions, and people have been very helpful. And I adopted a number of those suggestions, just to make it a better piece of work. So here we are. I have drafted this proposal, which we're calling, what is it, New Section, Section 4670. It repeals 4650 and 4650, and inserts a new 4670. And I think it accomplishes what this board wanted to accomplish. It's not carved in stone, certainly changes can be made to it, changes can be made on the floor of town meeting, for that matter. And I want to emphasize that in terms of form, that is, the way it's put together, there are not that, I mean, there are a lot of differences. I mean, there used to be two sections, now there are one, so forth. But in terms of substance, that is, affecting how people can use their land with regard to marijuana cultivation, or product manufacture, or retail sales and so forth, there are hardly any changes. The only substantive changes are to fix those ambiguities I mentioned, and to authorize product manufacture in the RA District where Mill Village Road is. But only on parcels of five acres or more, and only when co-located with a cultivation operation. So that's the gist, really, the substantive gist of those five pages of changes you're looking at. Lots of changes in form, very few changes in substance. And the most significant change is that one that just mentioned, that is, the authorization of product, what we're calling in this draft, product preparation, which I think is more descriptive. I've never liked that term, manufacture. And by the way, the legal definition of manufacture in the regulations, we'll read that to you, sorry. Here it is. The definition of manufacturer is to compound, blend, extract, infuse, or otherwise make or prepare a cannabis or marijuana product. Not that different from processing dairy products or other things, but so that's the background and context, that's what brings us here. It may seem rather audacious for me to, or for anybody, rather than suggest a change of this length, but tried to do you a favor, as well as doing my client a favor, basically. It seemed like a good opportunity. So I'm going to stop talking now. I'd like to, if I may, to yield the floor to Ali Kirkpatrick, who is the company's Director of Governmental Affairs. He came up from Washington, you've met him before. He's going to tell you a little bit about the company and their actual operations. Then, when he is finished, I'm going to ask my colleague, Don Dubenborf, to have a word, and then we'll take any questions you have. So this is Ali Kirkpatrick from Harvest in Washington.
Hello, thanks for having me today. I'll put together a little short slideshow, so you have a little idea of what we do, what I do, and what our goals here are in Deerfield. So most importantly, we do want to create a strong partnership with the town of Deerfield. We came into the town of Deerfield just because we thought we could have a mutual interest in helping the economic prosperity of the city. So that's our number one goal, is to create a partnership with you guys, the community here. I came a couple of times, and we did some events with the seniors in there, and tried to build a relationship with them. We're very, very committed to the community. So I'm going to, one of the most important things I want to do is be able to create employment opportunities for Deerfield residents. When we open, we are expecting... So we do want to create employment opportunities for Deerfield residents, and a lot of our jobs, they have very good benefits for residents, and they also come with, like, high-level training. I know Noel can get into that a little bit more as well. Also, we prioritize working with local vendors, so if we need some construction needs, or cleaning, anything, we would first look for local vendors within Deerfield to be able to help that with the economy. Also, I know you guys are, we're at the 2% host agreement, where all of the sales, or 2% of gross receipts go to the town of Deerfield, so that can be used for anything within the city. Also, there's a potential of generating different types of tax revenue in Deerfield, such as property tax. I know we acquired a building for about 3.2 million, and here is the local taxes of property and real tax. Next slide, I've covered the zoning bylaw changes, so I'll skip that. And here's just a picture of some of the products that a processing facility will create. It'll be more so like oils for like ointment that you can rub on your skin for muscle pain. Also, you could vape cartridges and whatnot, lotions, skincare, hair products, pretty much anything when we do that extraction process. So I just wanted to show you a picture of some of the products that are designed.
This is what you would be making in Deerfield?
Yes, this is what we've been making in Deerfield, and we'll be using our own grow. We won't be shipping anything else from anywhere else to make these products, it'll be our own.
And there's where that, I should show that already right there on...
Yes, let me point out that the greenhouse there, which used to be Pioneer Gardens, now it's Sun's Mass, this facility, I mean, I should say, this operation, this product manufacturer operation, if zoning allows it, would take place within the footprint of this building. We're not talking about any new construction. Talking about doing it within the footprint of Greenhouse.
It would, so like, those two residential houses that are sitting there, those aren't going to be converted, they would all be within the greenhouse area?
Well, the product manufacturer would be in Greenhouse. Those two houses, we told you they'd be used as offices.
They're just office spaces, yeah. No, but not residences, but not any kind of manufacturing.
No, 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 we wouldn't be using the houses for manufacturing.
Okay, so here's just a little comparison. I know you're aware that we do have a special permit for cultivation. So once we open for a full year, we're expecting anywhere between $35 to $45 million of revenue. So 2% of that, we're looking, again, in the city, about $700,000 and $900,000 from that. And also, like I said earlier, there's rail and personal property tax here, so you would also receive the tax money for that. And it'll be about 40 to 50 jobs needed for the cultivation process. But if we get the product manufacturing, product preparation bylaw passed, it could be an additional $10 million of revenue for that, for the facility, which brings about $900,000 to $1.1 million to the city per year. That's about, that's 2% of the $55 million. Also, like I said, the product manufacturers, if that passes, it could increase the value, the property value at the facility, meaning more tax revenue there. And also, it'll generate 10 to 20 more jobs immediately to manage that process. And this facility would be very similar to the one that we have in Hancock, Maryland. The general manager down there, he has a good relationship with the community there. There's zero complaints from the neighbors, and this one is like in the residential community where people are actually living. And nobody has complained, it's very safe, no public health issues, there's no burning on town resources, there's no change in traffic, or anything like that. And also, a couple months ago in December, I did a tour out there with a magazine called Maryland Leaf, and they did a pretty good article about us, and it's a very quiet operation, very good reputation. And some of the quotes, "Well, our reputation was born from their quality, passionate cultivation manager, Kurt Dyer, and the high-proefficient plant production, with the strategic partnerships and initiatives designed to support the local community." And another quote, "Hancock is known to know the cleanest and most efficient growers in the state." Another quote, I think is pretty important, is "Partners went above and beyond to ensure that every door, room, and walkway was kept pristine and sterile, both by maintenance of the facility itself and the day-to-day habits of employees as patients need, at the heart of all employees in the facility." So pretty much everywhere we at, we have a good reputation, everything is safe, quiet, and we work well with every city that we're in. And whatever that the city need, I know the company is very dedicated in making sure that everything is really smooth, and that we just keep a good relationship and work together. And that's pretty much all I have, unless you have any questions. Questions?
As Dick mentioned, John, you can do it from here on behalf of the proponent of the bylaw change. I want to speak to a couple of things. At the end of the day, this proposed bylaw can't just be good for the proponent, it's got to be good for the town of Deerfield. And there's got to be a land use, a set of land use policy logics that drives the decision. And let me first start by saying, manufacturing is a very unfortunate misnomer, in my opinion, in the CCC realm. This is not manufacturing as we typically know it. It is more analogous to the way we allow farmers to process product of their production. Again, I don't want to get into whether or not it's agriculture or section three, we don't have to. But it is analogous to the way we allow farmers to vertically integrate their operations. So if I'm a farmer with timberland, I can run a sawmill on my property. I can produce wood products on my property. Those might look like manufacturing, but we've made a distinction in the law, Massachusetts, that allow us, allow farmers, because of the challenges of that whole sector of our economy, we've allowed farmers to do that. And there is a logic to that. Here, the logic is driven by a couple of things. One, the greatest set of impacts in this industry on neighbors comes from the cultivation process. The greatest set, not the product preparation process. It is, and I've brought some of the experts from the company with me tonight, it is less odiferous, the product preparation. It is less energy-intensive. It is, in many ways, an easier land-use choice for the town of Deerfield than cultivation itself. What's important here is, okay, so why do we let co-location occur? If you don't, you're likely to have more marijuana establishments in your town, more locations for them. That presents its own set of problems, particularly for the zoning enforcement arm. One shop, one control, one set of bylaw, and special permit conditions on it, much easier to enforce, better off. The vertical integration I speak to affects the ag economy. It will improve the value of farmland. We've already seen some of that occur in the first transaction between the pre-existing tulip farmers and Sun's Mass. That was a happy outcome for the original farm operation there. And that's something that's not without concern for us, as we think about open space, and the way we ask farmers to preserve our open space for us, at great cost to themselves and their families. So increasing and benefiting the ag economy makes a great deal of sense. This is also a special permit process, so you have controls on how it occurs, the impacts it creates, the whole list, traffic, light, you know, the standard stuff that you guys have always dealt with. In this particular case, no footprint changes are going to be occurring. That won't be the case in the future, as you see others. There will maybe even new construction. But you have tools for it in this new bylaw, and it's carefully crafted to do that. One of the things that I'd offer the board to consider is if they want the proposed bylaw reviewed by town council, that the proponent would be happy to pay for that, so that town council could advise you and react to it, if that's something you want to do as you prepare for your report to the town meeting. But that's the land use logic for this, that's the policy logic for this. If it doesn't have that, it does only benefit the proponent and doesn't serve the town of Deerfield well. So I think that's the logic we're trying to push here, and I think this bylaw does that. And it does it in a way that's enforceable, as I said, doesn't allow the dispersal of these kinds of establishments. And the co-location piece is critical. I guess that's what I have. Are there questions for me?
Next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing more. If you'd like to entertain the comments from the public. Thank you.
So do we have a public comment? Do we have other people here who'd like to speak to this bylaw, who have familiarized themselves with it, or in response to any remarks made by the proponent?
Good evening. I would like, my name is Adrian Friend.
Thank you.
I am one of the people that sold the greenhouse property to Harvest, and I would like to take this opportunity to inform the board and the town that my experience in working with Harvest is that it's a very, very professional company, good to work with, they do what they say. Additionally, I also think that... Additionally, I also think that allowing for a change of zoning is good for the town. I think it's good for employment, it's good for the tax base. You already can tell by the amount of money that Harvest has invested in the town that they're committed. So I recommend the town and the board to change, approve the zoning promptly. Any questions?
Thank you. Is there any other concerns, any other thoughts? So...
No, I think we continue. Then we look at us. Because I don't think that, me, okay, so we have been also working on a zoning bylaw regulating marijuana cultivation land use in the town. One of the principles, the tenants of our work together has been that, actually, very much to Attorney Dubendorf's point, that the cultivation of marijuana is very intensive and actually is more industrial than it is agricultural. It is more of an event, so more like manufacturing than it is like an agricultural venture. The town of Deerfield is committed to supporting farm, farming as an industry. But we are not convinced, and as, no fault of Gogritz or Harvest or anything, we are not convinced that this is really the way to move forward as a... And I'm speaking for myself now, but I know it's part of what we've been, we've been talking about, to work forward with the town that was like to preserve open space and farmland. It doesn't, the way marijuana establishments function in their cultivation seems more like an industrial usage of property than ag, agricultural. And so, in point of fact, it does feel like the product preparation is less invasive and less complicated than the actual cultivation of the marijuana. And so that's one point, is that I do, I do think we want to continue, jump in. Anytime you guys want to talk about that, but that's, so that's one. Two, I'm not certain, the co-location, so that is, that has caused us to take a very hard look at our original bylaw, including a special permit in residential agricultural areas. We feel, we're feeling less confident that that's good for our town. Yeah?
Well, I can pick up from there.
Yeah, thank you.
I think that, I don't want to say we rushed, but there was a big learning curve for a lot of us. And as it was pointed out in this meeting, there was support to deal with marijuana. It wasn't overwhelming, but nonetheless, it was a majority way to go forward. We, I think as this board, working with other boards, there was a lot of conflict in, you know, how to go forward. And I for one wish that we would have gone slower and taken our time. Now we find ourselves in a situation where we've only had a couple of these things transpire. And that, now we're getting a lot of pushback that, you know, we originally allowed this marijuana production to go anywhere in the RA district. How it looks like it's going to go nowhere in the RA district. It, to some people, it's worked out really good. But to a lot of people who look around, they're not liking it. So they're demanding change. What this change is going to end up being like, we don't know. I, for one, appreciate the work that you've put into this. And I believe that, I'm going to say Adam has reviewed this, and that, you know, we've been talking, you know, about what we would like to see changed. And, you know, eventually, he's going to be the one that's going to produce whatever bylaws that we do push forward to the town. You know, as Mr. Dubendorf spoke about, you know, them both being together and, you know, different types of agriculture with the wood and stuff like that. You know, I can kind of see that point too. But it seems difficult for me to say that you're going to allow this processing or not manufacturing, whatever. When I see, you know, small cosmetic things up there. Because to me, it's like, I understand the whole thing, but how do you say to somebody else, well, you cannot make face cream over here. You know, well, I use, get it from goat milk. Well, you know, but still, you're putting up a facility where you're going to produce the goat milk and make facial creams and add different chemicals and colors and put it in jars and packaging and so... You know, that's more of a commercial venture. And so that's why we were looking to keep all of these things in a commercial zone. There's a lot of land in Deerfield, but our commercial area, all of that's quite small. And there's not a lot of area to develop in this town. Now, if you start opening up farmland, we got a lot of places that we can develop. That's not what our community wants. You know, and I've made it quite clear from day one that I'm personally offended that, you know, to save all the farmland, our local government takes my money. They don't give me a choice. They take a good chunk of it. And they say, okay, now we're going to preserve this farmland. And I've seen that not be the case. And a lot of other people are like that. And they keep coming to me as one of the members, say, look, you can't do this, you can't do that. And I say, wait a minute, you know, you are the people that are ultimately going to decide this, you know. We can put different things in front of you, but it's your choice. So, you know, I think that we would continue to work with our attorney and, you know, you know, I'm sure that he's reviewed our things. We'll get our input and we'll see what the final product looks like going forward.
May I just say that you know what our objectives and goals are? And I'd be happy to work with Adam or the board or Chris. If melding these two proposals together would be something that would be productive and useful for the town, I'd be happy to pursue that, you know. I don't, I don't, I don't want to get to town meeting and see the voters facing two different bylaws. I think that's a little awkward.
Well, I think it would be. I mean, I think we would put forward whatever final comes from Adam. And, you know, I don't think, this board has any issues with you working on the bylaw. I do remember in a previous position that the town council didn't want to be inundated by different people calling, you know. And so I'm not sure what the outcome was because I've left there. But I think that, you know, he'd welcome any input that you have. I know one of the concerns that the board of selectmen had at the time is, you know, running up the town's legal bills by other inputs. I don't know how that's all going to work.
That's the reason why I did this.
That's why they just offered to...
Exactly, you know, we appreciate it, you know.
No, and I also, I want to separate a couple of concerns here. And one is that, and kudos to Attorney Evans, to Attorney Dubendorf. You've put a lot of effort into making something very viable. Integrity is right through, and you've been very transparent about your intention. However, it does feel like the intention is from Gogritz. It's hard not to see this, for me, it's hard not to see this as an endorsement of Gogritz. And I don't, I feel that's a very awkward way to propose land usage regulation. Is to say, well, we've got this great company, and so we're going to make it, we're going to make it work for them with our bylaws, which in a funny kind of way, I feel like we already kind of did, to be fair. We saw an opportunity to move forward and we went with the RA because that seemed like, it did seem like something that was going to be good for our farmers. I don't, I think we had farmers that benefited from this, but I don't see how that benefit is going to be as appealing to the rest of the town moving forward as we see the, the way the cultivation of marijuana in New England proceeds. We've got a lot of concerns. We put in propane tanks to keep things warm and to, you know, to move things forward in a profitable mode. It's not going to be easy. It's not going to be outside. It's not going to be something that's like growing another agricultural product.
It's funny, it's funny, but one of the things that you just mentioned, one of the biggest or the most numerous complaints that I got was, you know, people concerned about climate change. And then they say, they're going to burn sixteen thousand gallons of propane to keep, what's going on here? Why isn't it more energy-efficient? And I'm like, don't ask me, I'm just saying, that's what they're looking for. That, that was, and I was kind of shocked of all the things. That was one of their big things.
You should have reminded them that this was a greenhouse, not a warehouse. Yes, they've got propane in case they lose heat in the middle of the winter.
Right.
But they don't want to lose entire crop.
But I'm sharing that, you know, how, you know, one concern turns into another, you know.
Sure.
So, you know, and sometimes you feel, as volunteers, you know, you see your friends and neighbors and all of a sudden, hey, what do they say? It's like, wait a minute, I didn't do this, and you know, it's... But you try to bring the response back here and try and figure out, you know, what's going to work well for our town? What were the intentions of our town? You know, what do the people really want? And that makes it hard because everybody's got a different opinion, so.
So, Man, Chair, I, a couple of comments. I don't, I don't think that the analogy to agriculture in cultivation is inept. I don't think it's inappropriate. The way this industry works right now, you can, you can grow hemp. That's a legal product, it smells. You can grow marijuana if you get a special permit in some cities and towns. And the industry, in my opinion, has been very sleepy and lazy about the major impact of outdoor cultivation, and that is odor. The use of greenhouses is one of the more elegant midway grounds between the industrial model, which is, you know, stories full of well-lit, heavily-lit growing areas inside buildings and old warehouses. You're seeing that across Massachusetts. The greenhouse model allows the major energy source to come from the sun. That's a just dramatic energy improvement over the warehouse model. And what pulls people away from, and by the way, the greenhouse model also does for marijuana what it does for other products. It allows them to grow, have a longer grow season so that you can grow a longer period of time. You can't do that with the outdoor piece. The fact of the matter is that in both the indoor grow and the greenhouse grow, the biggest impact, i.e. odor, is managed in a way that it's not in the outdoor grow. And managed well now. The technology, I've got, I've got my friend Noel Blake, or Noel with me tonight, and he's the chief scientist. He can speak to that if you'd like. That's a big distinction. Now, let me talk to your concern. You had one about processing your own and making a distinction between, you can make soap out of goat's milk, but somebody else can't make soap. Because of the way we've treated agriculture in the state, tried to favor it and tried to preserve the, that part of our economy, we have allowed farmers to vertically integrate. There's even a case that says, if I have dairy cows, I have beef cows, I can have a slaughterhouse on my farm, even when I can't do that in that district otherwise. So we've allowed those uses as incidental. And I think there's a logic to that. That vertical integration has a, both a land use logic that I spoke to, but also an economic logic. And that's what we're just trying to capture here. I don't think, you're absolutely right, I wouldn't be here if this wasn't good for the proponent. You're absolutely right. And I'm not going to apologize that for, but I would, I would also have done that proponent a great disservice if we didn't, if I didn't think through the land use consequences and the policy consequences. So the notion that, from my perspective, your notion that we wouldn't allow any cultivation and anywhere in the RA district or in the RA district is surprising to me. Because I think it has opportunity for the ag economy. And that's where I'm coming from. That's straightforwardly where I'm coming from. And by the way, the town meeting at the end of the day can decide this. I mean, they will, I mean, they will.
One of the, a large issue also with this is that we, we wanted to help farmers. And we saw one example, yours, that went forward. A farmer moved half a mile down the road. Now, we have more big greenhouses right out there where everybody can see this. What's stopping him from doing the exact same thing he did before? What if Jerry Jones from Texas comes up to Massachusetts and says, hey, I want to spend fifty million dollars. I'm going to give you ten million dollars for your new greenhouses. He'd sell on the heartbeat. Then he's going to go down behind Willows and start again. And this is what we're trying to wrap it ever.
Yeah.
This could continue and continue. And as word spreads, then R.J. Reynolds says, hey, wait a minute, there's a lot of money in this thing. We're going to go up there and we're going to do this. And where does Deerfield, you know, and you, being an attorney, they come in here with the applications. It's kind of like a done deal. We can propose all the changes we want now. Their application was in before, you know, we posted any change. So, you know, we've kind of feel like we're scrambling now. What do we do? And, you know, I'm a carpenter.
Yeah, but let me speak to that because I think, I think that's a fair concern. If, if gentleman to my right sells his greenhouses and puts in, and puts in an alternative, call it marijuana cultivation, and has no different impacts to his neighbors than his current operation, I think you should be happy as all get out from a land use policy point of view.
But it's already had an impact.
Yeah, I was going to say. But it, but it's current, but it's currently, it's currently exempted. That's by state statute. His work is exempt.
Oh, and I totally agree with that.
Yeah, so it's exempt. Take, Section Three takes it right out of our local hands in Massachusetts for all sorts of reasons. Whole bunch of Section Three exemptions. But you're right, but from a land use point of view, where we assess impacts, if it were the same or lesser, in the same footprint, how have we done a wrong thing there? How is that a bad policy outcome?
But it's not the same process.
It's not the same, and it isn't, you're right, it isn't, I agree with you there. But I'm talking about impacts. Well, let me share an impact with you.
There'll be a different impact, obviously, because you have to have much more security. Traffic probably could be the same, I don't know that. But, you know, he's raising something, putting it in a pot, talking about manufacturing now here. Everybody has a different definition on manufacturing, so...
I get you there. But my point is, at the end of the day, that's what you assess in a special permit process. That's all I'm saying. That's how you, you look at those. And by the way, those are discretionary. You know that. Those are discretionary.
Right, everybody's going to have an opinion. And hopefully, our townspeople will come in and speak their mind and give us some direction.
Sure, no, I get that, I get that.
And I think your question was a good one. How does this benefit the town? How did the first decision benefit the town? I think it has benefited the town tremendously to allow Harvest to come in and to allow farmers like us to reinvest the proceeds of selling the greenhouse back into the, in the community, which we have done. And allowing to move the town forward by going with the changing in the economy and adapt to the change in the marketplace and the challenges farmers are up against is only beneficial to Deerfield. And I think it's not just the money that we have invested from the proceeds of the greenhouse, it's also the money that's coming in from Harvest right now, plus the employees that are being hired, as well as the increase of the tax base. Town can use it. We've lost quite a bit of business already. So I think this is, the decision exactly a year ago is a good example of helping to move the town forward. It shows.
Well, I agree with you that the town can use the revenue. Lord knows we spend it faster than drunken sale. But, you know, my point is, and I think you'd agree, if somebody came along tomorrow and offered you ten million dollars for your new greenhouses, it'd be adios. You'd sign the papers and you'd go somewhere else.
I haven't gone anywhere. We have moved the hell up the road. So maybe not.
But you would do it again for ten million dollars. And I would do, of course I would. And, and what I'm saying is that the majority of the people in the town don't want that.
I have had no complaints.
Well, I'll give them your phone number.
A lot of people are very concerned when there was a talk about maybe creating one on Child's Cross, not Child's, but Wells, is it?
Wells Cross, right.
Yeah, Wells. Well, there's a lot of people who are concerned.
A cultivation prop?
Yes.
You had one that was coming or made an application?
I think they made an application.
An inquiry, okay.
Yeah, they even had a public meeting here, speaking to the public and stuff. And people are more apt not to be in favor of that. They don't come to the meetings, but they're concerned with... Uh, they don't come to the meetings, but they're concerned where the next one's gonna pop up. I don't hear anybody saying, "Oh, great, it's gonna be right here," you know?
Also, that our regulations, and, you know, this is, this is, we, we're looking down the road, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna look too far down the road and imagine all kinds of things, but we're looking at a company, we are, feel very lucky. We're looking at a company that has integrated into the town, has, it shows up even when we don't, that...
That wasn't necessary.
We almost had to send everybody home next. Thank God you got it. And that, um, that, that has ma- making a commitment to, to a town that is looking for, you know, new revenue streams. We don't wanna, though, open up to the not no, the no grits, right? And so, that is one of our biggest concerns, is that whenever we are faced with a special permitting process, we, we don't wanna set ourselves up for a bunch of judgments like that. We want our process, our regulations, to do a good bit of vetting for us already. It's one of the things about the co-location, I have to think about this more, because the thing about the co-location is there are other sites in town that if we were to say, "No, you have to do that in, in commercial, a C1, C2, you could do it."
Yeah.
There are places in town. That's why we want those places to be that. And, and so, we're kind of, why not? You know, why not make it that way? And for us, that would just, you know, gogrits notwithstanding, the next group that comes through, they don't have this, you know, all our trusted people here. We've learned to, it's somebody else. And, and, and you've been very apparent. I appreciate, you know, the, the army of folks that you bring to bear so that we do get a sense, because behind an LLC, we have no idea what it is. So, we've not, we've been very happy with that, or at least I, I can't speak for everybody, but I have felt very comfortable working with this group. And, I mean, another little shot at us, but Dick makes more of our meetings than some of us, so... I mean, he, his, his accounting of, of our, our processes is legitimate. He's been here right, right with us, and always transparent about where he stands on, on this, as, as we are very generous with our opinions, too. But anyway, I think that that's one of the things, just to, with this in front of us, it doesn't, with this and you in front of us, it would be, "Oh, yeah. No flag on the play, let's go." But I see a flag on the play just because I, I don't see that regulation, it should be legislated around a company as good as it is at that...
I, I agree with you. I, I don't disagree with you. I think, uh, as this process unfolds, we'll stay involved.
Yep. Yep.
I think that's... We appreciate your input, we really do.
Yep.
I mean, because we're all volunteers.
You don't want to...
And we're all learning this industry.
We don't know anything until the next time we get together, and it's like, geez, you know?
Yeah. I hear that. So, we'll stay involved.
I'd just like to make one final comment, and that, and this goes back to perhaps background and context, is that legalization of marijuana is pretty radical change, you know? It's, it's come on us all pretty fast. I like to call this period of time, we're in the awkward interval between prohibition and normalization. And we're not at a normalization yet. When, when marijuana is, is viewed as like another consumer product, it's no big deal, we'll be there, but we're not there yet. We're like halfway there.
And those of us, there are up here who will say, "If." I mean, I'm gonna say, "If." If it becomes normalized, and to what extent, I mean...
He of little faith.
Sorry. I'm a schoolteacher. I teach middle school. You know, I mean, I have, um, I never worked, I worked the pickle shop while my sister and brothers worked under the cheesecloth and the, you know...
Tobacco.
Sure is a record, sure.
So, we, we know these industries up here, and there aren't tobacco, we have a lot of lovely tobacco barns, but we don't have a lot of tobacco anymore. So, you know, we, and I, I don't, I'm not saying, "Oh, my crystal ball says, you know, here today, marijuana gone tomorrow." But I do wanna be sure that we're not setting ourselves up for an industry that the moment Alabama and Georgia legalized marijuana, we're, you know, later for you. Yeah. So, I, I, I just, this is a kind of a caution that, that we have in terms of our regulation, and we are, we are happy as clams that gogrits is here, making this work, but we don't necessarily, we're not jumping fast.
But we'll stay involved.
Yes.
And can I just ask, as you think about this, and talk to your colleagues, and read about what's going on in other cities and towns, try to think especially about what is the actual impact of the marijuana operation on the public health, the public safety, or the character of the community? I hear a lot of grumbling, but it's very hard to see any real impact. Now, visual impact with the greenhouses, with this new greenhouse, I can understand, but that's not a marijuana operation. But, but if it were, it would be a visual impact. But what, what, what actual effect on the public health, the public safety, has this or, or marijuana operation in Deerfield had, or in any other town for that matter?
Well, we don't.
But I know you don't think about it in other towns, but, but those are the, I think, I think in, you know, ten years from now, we'll probably shrug when the word marijuana comes up and wonder, you know, what was, what was the fuss all about? But we're not there yet.
Dick, when I, I don't think that I'm nervous, or, it's not the marijuana issue. It's, it's like all the building, the development type thing. It, it's like, I, I try to, I find it hard for myself to explain this, but it's like, a lot of, I think a lot of my friends are just real nice people, just real nice people. And they don't like a lot of this, but they're not the kind of people that are gonna come here and gripe about it. You know, they might all kept, you know, this, that, or the other thing, but it's like they wanna see change, and that's what they're trying to give us, or they are pushing us to, to do this, you know? And, and we're having a very hard time trying to figure out where we go. And that some of the people that are around this operation, you know, are, they're the biggest ones that are complaining, and I'm like, "Where were ya? Why aren't you out here?" You know?
I ain't gonna get involved.
So, we want to, we wanna go forward and see if we can, I don't know if use the word straighten out, but see if we can get it to where everybody here is happy. And that, I don't know if that's gonna happen, but that's certainly what we're going to try to do, you know?
Right. Everyone, maybe a good number.
And we, and at least I, for one, can appreciate what this company can do for the town as far as economically. And I, I think, like Rachel said earlier, that, you know, if processing at that location is not that appropriate, there's other places in town that are very close by that could accommodate that type of thing. One of the things, or another one of the things, is that, you know, how do we, you know, say that if we allow processing of this product, how come we don't allow processing of other products? You know? And as you said, and we all know, it's not an agricultural thing, and they might change that law, too. Who knows? But, you know...
What statute is, is pending in the House right now? House thirty-five nineteen or forty-nine, I think it is, that's looking to change to add cultivation to, to the ag definition in Chapter one twenty-eight.
I wonder if that's sixty-one A all along.
In committee.
They did such a wonderful job the first time around, it'll probably be such a great job this time, too.
I think the legislature's...
Yeah. No, I, I, I could tell you this. I, I hope you can achieve that goal of making everyone happy. Part of the problem with our boards in towns, and God bless you all for doing it, is that you end up making decisions and decisions...
Never make everyone happy.
Never make everybody happy, right? Somebody wins and somebody loses, and...
Hopefully, you make the majority of people happy.
There you go. And, and my hope is that you always make good decisions. That's the, 'cause I think that, that shows the leadership you gotta have, and, and so, we're not unsympathetic to what you're trying to do. And we'll stay, as I said, stay plugged in and involved.
One, one final point, if I may, to respond to Kip. You mentioned that, where were those people who are now grumbling? That's a good question. But for everyone, every person who failed to grumble before, but is, is opening their mouths now, there are probably ten people who supported the marijuana reform but kept their mouth shut. People don't talk openly, in my experience, about their embrace of our new law until they go into the privacy of a voting booth. Then it's clear how, where they stand. But that was a big, big shock to me personally, to realize that, that for so many years that I actually advocated, you, I advocated for reform of the laws, and, and hit stone walls after stone wall after stone wall, but then when we gave the public the opportunity to go into the privacy of the voting booth, they said yes, in almost an underwhelming number. And I'm thinking, "Where were those people all those years that I've..." You know, I mean, I'd spoke to a few Kiwanis Scouts, but not that many. But what I realized is that people didn't, they didn't need to be educated about marijuana. I'm generalizing here, but, but, you know, the mass, vast numbers of people didn't really need to be educated. They need to be given the opportunity to express their true views. And that's what happened in two thousand twelve, in two thousand eight, twelve, and sixteen. So, just...
No, and I get that, and I, I believe that a lot of people like myself thought that, you know, decriminalizing marijuana was not that bad of a thing, because there was a lot of it out there. You know, why should somebody go to jail or have this criminal record for just having a little pot or doing this? I, I get all of that. That's not the part that troubles me, I shouldn't say troubles me, but the part that we're dealing with is everything else that comes along with it. And people are constantly saying to me, a lot of people, even the people who support marijuana, "Well, I didn't realize this," or "I didn't realize that." I mean, the money this town has spent, you know, just on her lawyers, these, dealing with this over the last couple of years, and all the meetings and time, and, you know, now we're trying to deal with zoning, and all these other issues that have come along, and people, "I didn't, I just didn't realize it." You know, "I just thought we, why send somebody to jail because he had, you know, three ounces of pot?" And I think if, if that ballot question had six thousand words explaining all these things that communities would deal with, people would look at it, "What the heck?" You know? I think it would've been different.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, you know, people...
I think we're not really getting any more...
No, we're not. I know, I think we're digressing. And I would like to, I would like to propose, since we do have our own bylaw regulation that we're working on, and we'd like to be able to look at these side by side and look at, and see, I think that that would give us an opportunity to do that. I'd like to continue this meeting till the twenty-fourth, the famous twenty-fourth. If anyone would like to move that, that would be great.
Sure. I'll make that motion. Move the marijuana meeting until the twenty-fourth.
Continue, continue this meeting, this open hearing, until the twenty-fourth of February.
Are we closing the public hearing?
We're gonna continue it.
I think we're gonna continue it. 'Cause we have another one, because we have another one before us, and we wanna look at, I think we wanna look at both, and I think if we're, if we're, if we close it, then we have to move at some point to act on it. And I think that we wanna look at them side by side. I don't think there's any rush to close this hearing, other than, then, we're gonna close it at some point. And I don't think there's a whole lot more. If there's more to bring forward, that would be great. But at this point, I think that we'd like to be able to look at both of them side by side, and that way we'd have both, both the public hearings open at the same time. So...
I'm ready to vote.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Did you vote?
I'd like to be opposed.
Opposed?
I, I would like to close the meeting.
You wanna close the meeting?
Close the hearing.
Close the public comment part of the meeting.
We've heard what we, and we've heard from the public.
Well, just, just, I believe I'm speaking properly here, that when we get another proposal from our attorney, we still have to have a public hearing for that.
Yes, we do.
So, there's no sense of closing this now, because we wouldn't be able to go through that process proper.
Like I said, I'll just vote against.
That's fine. So, three, one, zero, in favor of continuing this public hearing until February twenty-fourth at seven o'clock. And at that point, I think we'll have another, another public hearing. We have some old business, which has to do with our, our bylaws that we have been considering. Before, maybe we get to that, I think we would love to hear from Scott Raymer. This was a proposal, sorry, something that was other business, not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours in advance, as Scott is here. Do you guys have that in front of you? He has, um, thank you so much.
Copy for you.
Oh, I, yeah, and I think we have copies, but here, is everybody? Okay. So, this is for the decommissioning. This is a, this is a letter setting forth their intention to post a surety bond of forty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars to meet the town's decommissioning requirement. This number was arrived at by Kevin McCaffrey's assessment. At one point, let's see, it says, this is just the last paragraph, again, back to my English teacher stuff, "Given that the estimate was provided by a third party," right? And that the estimate, estimate does not account for any salvage value. So, the salvage value, if the decommissioning happens, you're decommissioning it anyway, we're just having that number, just in case you guys run away. So, the salvage value is not accounted for.
Yeah, that's true.
That's, that's just, it is what it is.
That's true.
And that's what Raymer's, I mean, that's what, sorry, not you, Scott, but...
Well, the idea with that would be, and good evening, everybody, Scott Raymer.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, that's okay. Thanks for hearing me last minute. We're, we're working with our financing party.
Yep.
They're wanting us to get all our ducks in a row, and eyes down and t's crossed.
Yep.
Quickly to the salvage value. Your point is, is what I made. The only idea there would be that if the town did have to, to remove things, that there is value in the, and, and that the town would have that in addition to the...
This forty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-five.
But we ignore the salvage, any potential salvage.
So, you're just throwing that in and saying, "And that's yours, too."
That's also yours.
But Kevin's, Kevin McCaffrey, who is the third-party civil engineer from SWCA, they, they didn't figure that in at all. They're just are counting on what it would take to, to take it down and get rid of it.
That's right.
So, we're voting to accept this? Is that what we need to do?
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly what, exactly what you guys need to do to make it happen. We're just asking for our financing party to be able to take a letter on the town of Deerfield.
So, that's what you need to know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Letterhead on town of Deerfield that says, "We accept the decommissioning amount of forty-seven thousand five twenty-five in the form of a surety bond to be posted before our building permit is issued." And that's basically all we need right now from the town.
Okay, I see. So, that's from our accountant, or town accountant? Where do you need it from?
Well, you guys are the authority.
Right, so it's from...
I think if you just ask Sue to do it, and then, you know, Sean, or you, or myself could come in and sign.
That's easy, yeah.
The only other question is the last sentence on the end there, which just says whether or not we would need to form a full, a full formalized legal contract between us and the town, or if, you know, we have an agreement where the letter says these terms, we have to post a bond, that surety bond before the decommission, before the building permit.
So, you just wanna know how, how formal, if a letter from us does it for your financial people, that...
That'll do it for our side, yeah.
I suspect that's enough for us, too, but so...
And, and basically, you know, saying, "We can't build until we give you the surety And basically, you know, saying, "We can't build till we give you the surety bond, and we'll have that up." So like I said, hopefully this is pretty short.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's all there is.
Okay, so, in the next area, so I'll talk to Sue, I'll find out who can, you know, put that together for you. And then you'll have that letter. And we send that to...
Just, um...
You?
You can, yeah, you can just email a copy of it to me. Sue has my email address quite easily.
Not Dan?
Uh, Dan, yeah, Dan, Dan, that was written to my colleague.
Perfect, so it goes to you.
Financing parties that say the same thing. So that's okay, if it was not needed, everything is okay with that. Thank you guys very much.
Well, we could take a vote to accept this.
Okay.
That would actually cut me.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the decommissioning proposal submitted by Hexagon.
Hexagon.
Or actually, could you say Old Frontier 3?
Oh, geez, okay.
Solar LLC.
For the old, old Deerfield.
No, Old Frontier, Solar 3.
Old Frontier, Solar 3.
Frontier, Solar 3.
Old Frontier, Solar 3, a surety bond, that we will receive a surety bond.
Surety bond. Well, someone reviewed the $47,000, I feel that's...
Yes. So you wanna second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys very much.
Does this have to see this?
Have a great evening.
Thank you, thanks for waiting. Good night. Are you, um, Sparta? Hi! I'm well, thank you. Did you have a question?
We have more, like, a presentation in the...
Come step up to the microphone.
Yes. Do you wanna go first? Do you guys mind if, because Chris is here, and maybe if you look... I don't know, do you wanna stay for this? And we could go over that. I just feel like if we don't set a public hearing date for our bylaws, we need to do that sooner rather than later. We need to be able to open that for the 24th. Yes. I do too. I think we should run through the...
Are we talking about marijuana or floodplains?
No, marijuana.
You stop talking marijuana?
Yes, because ours, our bylaws are here somewhere. But anyway, we've got, and we should look that over, because our use, our use table, for example, is very different from the one that is presented by...
Is this the one that you did, or is this what we got from Mr. Evans?
No, that's Evans.
I didn't know that you were, you were bringing that marijuana proposal forward.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
So I misspoke then, so it's not Adam Costa that's...
No, it's us, I mean, it's us.
The planning board, really.
Well, I, I mean, I understand that, but who is going to, who's actually gonna draft it for us?
It's drafted.
It's drafted, it's done.
It's in our minds. So we need to present that to everybody, that's the thing. And I think that, and I don't have copies of it, Sue said she was gonna make copies of it, I have a copy of it.
At the last meeting, I thought we were gonna hash over, like...
We had a few more things to let happen.
Right, we talked about what areas maybe possibly it was gonna go in.
Which is what I did, and I put together two overlay districts, an MO1 district and an MO2 district that are very specific to, one is just for retailers, and one is for cultivation and production and so forth. And I put together a recommendation for which districts those should be in. And there's also some things about buffer zones that Rachel and I have talked about a little bit, but a recommendation for how to handle buffering of residential uses. So those are things that we worked on since the last discussion on this.
Did you send all the...
Well, I sent it to Rachel.
I have it.
Rachel.
Oh, sorry.
So...
And it's mine to disseminate, but I'm just wondering...
Is there a chance that we could meet separately before the 24th to just go over that?
You mean us?
Yes.
Well, if we're gonna have a meeting, it's gonna be to the public anyways, but you mean...
No, I mean, but not an open, not a public hearing. So that we're looking at it one more time, this is my fault, Dr. Evans.
Well, but I think it's important that we do. I mean, I know that we're all hard-pressed for time, but I think that it's important that we get together and talk about it, so we don't have something at the last minute, say, "No, you know, this is not what we wanted."
Right.
We need a consensus on the board, too.
Yeah, especially since it's ours. We're crafting something that is, you know, that is different. And we've been working on this, we're looking to get...
Would you mind sending me what you have? Do you have something?
I do.
You know, I would send it to you all if I had emails for everything, I'm just doing it automatically, but I don't have it.
I don't know about these guys, I'll keep them on.
I can do that, I can get everybody to do that.
You can, you can just send it to me. Okay, I'll send it up to you all.
I got the agenda, so whoever sent the agenda out has two reasons.
Sue, yeah, 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 yeah.
Do you wanna just schedule a working session to just do that?
Do we, can we do that? Who's up ahead?
We can't, but we, same thing, we need a forum, and we have to post it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a 24, it's a 48-hour posting, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a public hearing.
You could even do it in, in an afternoon or something like that, isn't that...
Do you guys have time?
What day, Max, I know is...
Fridays and Mondays?
Six o'clock's a problem for me, so...
Well, let's not do it, six, any, even the day, not even, any day.
He's been working six times.
Friday's a good day?
No, because I got what's happening.
I'm pretty much available anytime.
Yeah, I'm the same.
We don't do anything anymore.
Take up space.
What if we go next, what if we go next Monday?
Is John gonna be around?
I think John's gonna be here.
All right, why don't we, why don't we schedule some...
We should, I'm sure he's gonna...
Well, but, I know, but we can do it 48 hours, so we could do this over email, we could make a time over email. And then we could have a working session, post it 48 hours, work on this, and then hopefully... But I really would like to do it sooner rather than later.
Well, I agree with you. Why aren't we doing next Monday, then?
Monday?
We try it.
Yep.
Oh, wait, that's a holiday.
No, it's not.
I don't think so.
What's the following?
President is the 17th.
Coming to my house for dinner.
I don't think I can.
What?
Well, I'm gonna try it, I don't give a where I am. I'm going to a car show.
Okay, so Monday, we're gonna shoot for Monday.
Monday at 10:00.
What do you guys think? 7 o'clock?
Next Monday? Next Monday, the 10th?
Yeah.
Yes, 7 o'clock, I'm here. Roger.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I have anything going on.
I'll try to find Aunt Mary, and John, and Paul.
Yeah, and Paul.
All we need is four, turns out.
And it says 7:00.
Okay.
7:00. Okay.
Okay.
See, I'll see what it is.
Thank you, Chris.
So we'll have a, I guess, Mac, yes?
Yes, I will mention, that is my call. I have been just sitting down, but the use table looks different, takes it out of our... That's what we talked about.
Yes, oh yeah, definitely.
Okay.
To answer your question about dinner, yes.
Hi!
Hi!
So we feel so bad, and we're gonna be so griefed.
Oh, good.
It's a long meeting for you guys, and in fact, so we were supposed to be on the agenda for my understanding, but Sue...
We are.
You are.
You are.
We are, we were told we are.
And that's all?
Here are, it's right here, Sparta, that's all I got. Sparta, questions?
So...
Oh, yeah, no, we were supposed to be, I think we're on the agenda, agenda, and then Sue got back, and she forgot.
No, we were hoping, we were hoping we were.
Oh.
Yeah, she told me that we could just come in and...
And in fact, in fact, we're actually happy that it turned out this way.
Great.
Because of the...
Oh, the previous, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, so introduce yourselves.
Okay, my name's Robert Wolf.
Robert Wolf, are you on our list here? I'll get you to sign that. Don't, don't forget to sign this before you leave.
And we, so we have a company called, if you don't mind, let me give you these. And these are very truncated, you'll get more in the future. But we have a... So we have a team called GrowSpace New England that finds and develops land sites for cannabis cultivation. We raise the capital, we build the buildings, and we lease them to licensed cultivators. And we have a 13-acre piece of property here in Deerfield that is in the industrial zone. It's a right along I-91, and I don't have a locust map there, so it's a little bit, I apologize. One of my notes this evening, I wanted to show it. But it is right on a Yankee Candle. So if you know, right on Plain Street, Plain Road?
It's right where the old drive-in movie is, right?
No, oh, really, yes, in front, yes.
There used to be a drive-in theater there.
There's actually a map on the last two pages, there's two maps.
So let me, let me give this as a... Sorry, I'm being abrupt on this approach, so... Yeah, so you have, you have a map set up, right, so we have a plan. So we have, we have 20 sites in Massachusetts that we're doing, what we're doing with you tonight. And both basically, we're targeting seven sites. We've presented all over the country, we're major visitor, Las Vegas show, we're all over. We know the industry a little bit in detail. And it's a lovely piece of property. It will host, do you think, well done, two of those tier-one, tier-two entry-level greenhouses. They're high-tech greenhouses, they're fiberglass composite material, like an indoor building with a closed roof. All the mechanical and everything is enclosed, and it's, you could grow anything in them, and they do. So down the road, if cannabis doesn't...
Moves to Georgia.
We have, one of our partners is doing heirloom tomatoes for Whole Foods Market in Happy. So the use of these buildings is really magnificent, and I see this, I'm, I'm, my background was radio stations in Vermont to projects out in California, and I was introduced in California agriculture, where there's a great movement for the farm-to-fort, the farm-to-table program, right? And I see that happening here, and that would be great for our company, growing tomatoes, asparagus, and geese, whatever, and local markets, so you don't have any transportation costs, and you've got better products. And greenhouses are the way to go. So there's a longevity for this, there's, you know, there's, there's beyond, beyond the horizon, there's multiple uses for these facilities. But for right now, cannabis is the high-value crop. And so our, our, our deliverable is that we can develop these, raise the capital, so that we're really gap-filling for all these people that can't raise the capital. 80% of the projects across our desk will never be built. They're too expensive, the CapEx costs are too high, and they're operating costly, and have no clue what they're doing. So we basically have come in as the legal resource, the administrative resource. I have an MBA in finance, and also an accountant, and I'm, I'm an engineer, and I'm an attorney.
You spent too much time at school.
I did, I, you know, I did that in my 40s, so that's, anyway. So we, we have, we viewed this, I was brought in, and we came out here, I even did solar projects out here in 2006, 2007. And I came, I was finishing a broadcast project in Sacramento, and I came back out, I'm in Bar, Massachusetts, and I thought, "Well, I can find my next big project." And I'll never retire, I'll always look at some, you know, a new, a new project. And the cannabis industry looked like it was one that needed a lot of help, because they can't raise the capital, can't get the permitting, and their visions are sometimes skewed, because they were in a, what I call, closed circuit secret society. They're all involved in their industry, but don't really share the space. You can't ask a cultivator what it costs for them to grow, because they don't wanna share the information, and therefore it is limited data points. So we've spent an enormous amount of resources this year just on data. We sent out 38,000 letters to landlords, and landlords amassed, and looked at 1,000 pieces of product. And come up with 20 that were, this is one. So it's industrial zone, the way the concept is, I don't know if you know it, but well, you do, because it's...
I think I do, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, the accessway will be on Plain Street, we'll have a buffer...
Plain Road.
Plain Road.
Plain Road, I call it, okay, Plain Road. So, you know, it's sheltered, you're not gonna see it from below. And we're gonna have, in a section of that, which is better, I think, on paper than here, we're also doing onsite solar, so that we can mitigate the electrical renewable resources. Greenhouses take much less power than indoor facilities. We made a comment earlier, the amount of carbon footprint for indoor growth facility is unbelievable. It's a travesty. And they don't think through the fact we have not a power that's required. So we are actually mitigating the power requirements, and actually doing onsite solar that can mitigate the power demand. So they're almost freestanding without using any renewable resources. So these are, this is a 20,000-square-foot platform, of which 10,000 square feet is what they call canopy. And this is a smaller unit of about 13,000 square feet, that is 5,000 square feet of canopy. So the two licensing criteria is the smallest ones of what these do. And they're for local cultivators, and we have local cultivators that want to lease these farms, ready to go.
Right now.
Yeah.
You?
So, the piece of property starts on 5 and 10, that strip in there is something white, like, yeah, what is that, right where your fingers are?
Well, that's, that's, that's an option for a third, but I'm not gonna ask for permitting for it now, but that is, I'm putting it, that's a good location for a third one if we expand it.
And so your company's gonna buy this piece of property and develop it?
That's right. Right, so that's a great way to leverage the capital, so we're basically doing it as a real estate investment process, so we can actually raise the capital based upon the assets. So we don't have to, we're not operators, we're not gonna be licensees, we're not going to go, we're gonna manage these facilities and be the primary point of contact, and manage the facilities, because we have, this is about a $5.6 million project.
You'll sell these to the people or release them?
No, the lease, the lease rates are, believe it or not, between about $45,000 to $80,000 per month, triple net over seven years. So it's, these are, these are, they're, they're professional greenhouses.
So your model isn't a variety of these, you'd lease it to one, how many leasees?
This would be one or two.
One or two.
Yeah, right.
And this isn't part of this other third spot, the 13,000? What, why is that? I mean, that's a whole different permitting issue, because it's got an E-res onto 5 and 10.
Right, right, that, I put it down just because that could be a possible location, doesn't have to be, and again, this is a preliminary, just, I'm introducing this to you, you know, so get the conversation started. And, and, and usually, you know, we meet with the, you know, the, the town engineer, so in Douglas, we're working on a project in Douglas, dealing with the, you know, dealing with the hierarchy of all the people. Right now, we met with you for the first time, so usually we deal with, you know, people that you rely on as well. So we, you know, we work this through with all the stakeholders, and we work through the permitting process. So we have a project in Levannahboro, Douglas, Orange, Templeton. Wendell, we had a project, we're not going to do it, because it was an indoor growth facility and has too much power. So we're cognizant of the carbon footprint argument that's absolutely resonating in this industry.
So you're saying if the marijuana thing fizzles out...
Tomatoes.
Well, it's funny you say tomatoes, because I knew somebody in town, I'm gonna say 20 years ago, tried raising tomatoes, wasn't economical.
Yeah, you have to do them vertically, and you have to make sure that you...
I'm just, I'm not a farmer, I'm just saying, you know, it sounds good, but...
Yeah.
Well, it is the new, I mean, the, the technology there has lots of flash and pop right now, it's moving forward, so it is changing, I think.
Well, I know, and cost of transportation, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there are different ingredients in the, in the, in the model that you have to analyze. And again, the market demand is such that, you know, it's not the everyday tomato that you're gonna be buying that, but it's an heirloom, or it's a high-value product, and the Whole Foods sells it, and they got a premium price for it.
Well, it can happen.
Yeah, so, and frankly, once these buildings are paid for and amortized over the relatively short period of time, they're, it's, they're there.
Made all the money in cannabis.
Exactly, right.
With any luck.
And, and, you know, with some of your comment before, I think cannabis has, I, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not saying unfortunate, all right? It's, you know, as long as it's not abused like anything else, so gambling's abused, alcohol's abused, tobacco's abused, right? As long as it's well-regulated, and it's co-legisiously regulated, so you guys get direction from the state to know what you're doing, right? Because you guys were hung out to dry a little bit by the state regulations, in my opinion.
Right, well, so...
Yeah, yeah, it's water over there. So, point is, I think it's gonna, it's gonna be a product that's gonna be around for a while, but as long as it's highly regulated, and you really have good controls over it, so it's reasonably done, I think you have good public support for that type of attitude. If it's freewheeling, then it's a totally different dynamic.
I think that this, personally, I feel that state was cautious and thoughtful, and moved, so they hogtied us in some ways, but they also didn't, they've got, we've got regulations behind us in terms of signage and things like that, or from the state, that we don't have to worry about, that is a good thing.
Yes.
Colorado, if you, if you're driving around, it is, it's Wild West, it's the Silver Saloon, but with big cannabis leaves, I mean, we just, we're protected by that, from that. And so some of the state regs have actually protected us.
Absolutely, and there's an underlying political fabric there, where, you know, you made a comment about whether Alabama's Carolina's, that might happen with him, right? But, you know, controls that Massachusetts wants to keep on this industry, and in him as well, is gonna protect our industry, so we don't have cross-border infiltration. We'll never allow product coming in from New York, or coming in from Carolinas, or coming into the state, because frankly, the value proposition for the local market is just too important.
Like, are you saying that they can't import marijuana now?
No, they can't, because, well, it's federally, it's a federally barred, it's still a classified...
So you can't grow it in?
Yeah, yeah, got a pass.
That's gonna change.
But it...
It's all, you don't think so?
Well, it will, yes, yes.
It's all about economics.
Exactly.
And it's gonna change.
And that's right, and that's why Massachusetts, if it proves, will regulate it like alcohol and some of the other things, will mandate local control, because it's too much variety of...
The residents are gonna complain, "Why, why am I paying, you know, a million dollars for whatever, an ounce of marijuana, when I can go down to Connecticut or Alabama and get it for $2?" It's, you know, it's not gonna happen.
It won't happen to us though.
It won't happen fast, though.
No, I know, it's going to take time for it to evolve.
Right, right. Yeah, we see, I see a horizon of about five to seven years, until the price be, right now, the price point is fairly stable, fairly high. And unfortunately, a lot of the, a lot of the people that are, that are developing this industry are counting on that high value coming out for a long period of time, and I think that's full mark. I think it's going to drop, like you look at Washington State and some of the others, if you've done any research...
It's already started.
Make your money and run.
Well, okay, so we're better regulated, we're not going to walk west, like happened in Washington, so then I think the price points are going to be stable. But, it's going to drop. And so, giving you some sense, their project are coming in at about three hundred fifty dollars a square foot, I'm coming in at a dollar, one hundred sixty-five a square foot. So our CapEx costs are realistic, so you can actually, you can actually make these profitable at a low price. So we're actually bottoming this out, so if the price drops to literally a thousand dollars a pound, right now it's nearly four, we still have, they're still profitable.
So a steel building with fiberglass skins, you said?
Uh, no, it's actually interesting, composite and steel, a composite and fiberglass arch support. So in there, there's a, a quick render, of the, of, basically, it's an art, a company called Arch Solar, and it's a Chinese manufacturer, and they...
They make them in America.
Well, they, they designed them in America, it's, you know, I think eventually, you know, we're going to have to make them here. But it's a, it's a relatively straightforward design, so it has a, but, but the, the wind loading, weight loading is exceptional on it, because of the arch structure and the composite material, right? And those are the two sizes, tier one and tier two. And the, so the fabrication's straightforward, the construction is solid, and the deployment, the main, the actual construction of it on ground, really simple. On a slab, straight up, a couple weeks to install, good, good, good facility.
Slab, or a concrete slab?
Yeah, absolutely, and it has to be with FDA, so the FDA is going to be involved within two or three years. So we're designing all our facilities with that in mind, so down the road, you know, it's going to be federal, there are going to be some federal compliance requirements that we actually anticipate, how we actually integrate the, the slab design, et cetera.
They're actually considered like the building, then, with the concrete foundation?
Um, well, the greenhouses, you would want a concrete foundation only because of the easier for maintenance, I mean, you could...
Well, I, I can understand the advantages, but, well, you know, because, like, greenhouses, I don't, they don't consider them buildings, I don't think.
Uh, they don't, they don't. So our N E P actually incorporates sprinklers, it actually incorporates elements of building design, so they're anticipating they are buildings.
So you'd have to pull a building permit and stuff?
Yeah, that's right.
You're, you're, would be looking for a building permit.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, this is interesting.
It's a lot going on in this industry in this space.
That's it, that's an interesting property.
Well, it's, it makes it affordable, and it makes it profitable. We have two groups that are interested in doing this, and actually, one is a, a couple out of Jersey that's moving to Massachusetts, and another group that's in Springfield. So, you know, great, basically, family, family growers that want to do this, so maybe two or three employees per, per building, so it's not a lot of traffic. It's a nice use for that land. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments before, okay, thank you. Oh, I heard your vote before, so I...
Right.
Have a great night.
Thanks, you as well. Ah, shoot. I did all that to write out the continuance, and I didn't get Dick to sign it.
They don't have to sign that, do you?
Well, he does, because he's bringing it forward to us. We didn't have to sign that one, but we do, I'll, I'll email him, he'll be fine with that. No, that one we didn't, because that's us, but, you know...
Good night.
Good night, thank you. Dick Evans had to, would have had to sign that, because he brought that forward. And I had it all written out, because I was trying to... Well, what do you got for us? Nothing, you're just sitting here.
Spectator. Do we have to vote on minutes or stuff?
Yeah, we should vote on minutes. Do you have those in front of you?
I read them...
I did too.
Online, I don't know if they changed.
She sent them to you?
She did.
Did I get them? Must have been. I read them this afternoon. This is the thing, she says, we need to represent it to regional planning board from the planning board municipality, John Veronese and Ann Mary were interested, but... Ann Mary said no, I thought.
I thought she said...
She said, no way.
I know, but then she changed her mind, and said that...
She'd just go when she could.
Yes.
That's what it was, you're right, okay. And John used to like that, so that's what she was kind of pointing out.
I wanted to ask, I guess, Dan, from the solar thing, if you talked to ever so...
Scott.
Yeah, if they pushed that stuff back further than...
Ah, yeah, 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 yeah.
But, I wanted to ask him at night, before he left the thing, I don't know.
I forgot, we couldn't ask that. You know what, I'll ask him in an email, Roger, and I'll, I'll copy you.
You're not going to see that anyways, it's on the other side of that one.
Yeah, I know, it's on the other side.
But he should, in good faith, he said he would ask, he would pursue it, and I think that would have been good to ask, I'm so sorry, that's, good call.
Uh, another solar field someplace, I don't even know where, where it was, but they did, like, have, like, three poles, and they had their, like, whatever, their panels or meters on them, and then it just went, poof, right down in the ground, and went out to the solar field, but I don't know why they have those three big pole, I mean, like, there are telephone poles, and they're high. So I don't understand why they need to do that.
Well, that's not going to be in the field, that's going to be on the edge of road.
Yeah, I don't think that...
I know that, but that's what I'm saying, why do they even need to do that? Why can't they have them, like, on a pedestal, you know, so, or if they need to be off the ground, you know, why have a, a pole, you know, just go up and down, you know?
Well, the poles are for the wires.
It goes underground from the meter, I, I mean, from their meter things, over to the pole, then it goes up, then it goes down the road.
These are right out in the field tip, like, you know, they're not, like, part of the, uh...
Are you sure that's what you think? Because the discussion we had was about the actual, not the meter box, what do they call it, the transformer-type thing, and the meter thing, and that whole thing was only about thirty-six inches high.
Yeah, well, the transformers, that's a whole, but, that's, it's, like, they're, they're meters, like, by the road to measure, and I don't know why they need them on a big pole, you know? Why couldn't you just go up underground? And I think that's what we got them to do, they're not having big poles, so that's the typical installation, that's what I'm trying to say.
That's why we're, we're saying that they're doing that.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, I'm, I'm, anybody want to move to accept the minutes as, as presented?
I move to accept the minutes of January sixth, two thousand twenty.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, and abstaining? So that's three, uh, zero, one, one abstention max, right?
No, I, I watched the video.
Oh, good. So, four, zero, zero, perfect. So, did you see the... Well, all this discussion, so this is the discussion that we had about marijuana last time, and so, that, that, um, this is the kind of concerns that we had about a map, and that's what Chris has for us, I think that's what he's prepared for us, is a map, so if we can look and see with this use table, what is available, like, are we creating use table that, that has potential for zero growth? Actually, the use table would include this one.
Yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely.
So that's the kind of thing that we were just trying to figure out, look at it and say, and then separating the use, separating these uses out, so that it isn't all in one spot.
You know, and that, if you think about, that's kind of a, I'm going to use the word clever way of doing it, because this, what this guy's proposing is, he, he can come before the board and say, I want to put up these fabricated greenhouses and stuff like that, and I am going to try to, you know, rent them to a marijuana company, but if I don't get a successful tenant, I'm going to rent it to a tomato company.
Yeah, well, that's...
So that, there's kind of a catch there, because, you know, although, if, say, we do approve a site plan, knowing that we don't really know who the ultimate tenant is, then he comes back, and they want to put marijuana in there, those marijuana folks are still going to have to come before the board for all their stuff anyways. It's just the site plan portion of it would be taken care of.
I think what he's going to do, obviously, he's going to try to propose to this, and get the okay, but then he's going to try to sell this to somebody that wants to raise marijuana and stuff, he's not going to put them up and say, here, I've got this place all set, because obviously, he's going to put up the money to go.
I'm not sure, I think in our bylaws, though, that can't necessarily happen, because whoever comes before us has to be the ultimate one.
The licensee.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, if that's the case, then we have to, yes, so he'd have to have it sold before he even came to us.
Right, and he'd have to apply for a, a community host agreement, and all nine years, right?
Right.
Yeah.
There's our expert.
Yeah, he probably is, probably knows a lot more than we do.
How are you guys doing?
I was going to say, when, when's anybody going to get a license to start growing this stuff?
We're on the record, remember, still.
Yeah.
And what I didn't say, and, and, only because I was trying to be polite and listen, is that, you know, that farm down the road sold for three point two million dollars, and it's still only assessed at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, have they even put any, I see what you're saying, the property tip, not like so much...
Well, there's buildings there, but the, the uses changed, and it, and we, and it all went, the, the tax should have changed.
So mine should have went down then, right?
Exactly.
Do you have any questions for us?
So the concern that I have as a resident is probably the same concern that you raised earlier with the cultivation. We, we put up a greenhouse, we sell them for ten million dollars, and then we put up greenhouses over here. That's kind of the same situation that's going on here, is the concrete pad, and that, that's how it's done now, and to me, that's a building.
It is.
Well, he's going to get a building permit, that's what he's saying, so...
I understand that, but now, you know, you have all of that in the R A district, now it's full of buildings, it's full of buildings.
That's what we are trying to...
It's not, there's no out, there's no outdoor growing in this business, so, I don't want to see the entire R A district littered with greenhouses and...
I think there's a lot of people, you're being honest, thinking that.
And I think that's what we're responding to, that's why we're...
But they don't come here, I hear on the street, I interview people.
Well, everybody thought that Pioneer Gardens, that those were the popular, those, that was the marijuana, like, oh, look, there's the marijuana, my sister-in-law is driving by all the time, she thought those were marijuana, she thought that was it, she thought that was it, for, for four months, I was like...
No, I think that's a lot of concern with other people, though.
Oh, yeah.
Um, can I just run through what I need to do?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, because I think we're, we've made it through the agenda, I haven't looked at mail, but I don't know. Um, I need to check with Bill Furman about the...
The fee?
The fee for the A and R, because I, I don't see it registered, I'm sure it's fine. I need to check with Bob Walden to find out that he has no comment.
Would you like me to speak to Bob and take that off your plate?
That'd be awesome, okay?
About the North Street thing?
Yes, about the North Street thing, because I think that would be very important. Also, tell him, he asked me about those houses at one ninety-eight Pioneer, you know, at the Sunset, those are for how, for retail, they're, I thought they were going to take one down, they're keeping them both for office space. And I told him wrong, because, could you correct me on that, correct, tell him?
Bob, correct, Bob.
Bob, Walden, no, yeah, correct, I told him the wrong thing.
Okay.
Um, I need to do the Scott Reamer letter, follow up with that, get Sue to write a letter, talk to whoever about making sure that that's all legit, and that he gets that.
For the...
For, um, old Frontier Solar Street.
A solar field.
Okay.
For the decommissioning.
And I will put in that, because I'm going to send him an email, so I'll put in that, I'll ask what the status of, of moving the, you know, response to the, to the homeowner's request that he said that he would honor. And then I've got to get Dick Evans and Dubendorf to, I'll write them an email, I'll copy you, just saying, we'd like their approval. And I think that email will serve instead, you know, in place of getting them to sign that continuance. The reason I think that we need to continue is because we need this working meeting so that we can put forward our thoughts into it.
Well, but also put our, help me out here, because when Max, you know, was opposed to continuing it...
Yeah.
What I'm thinking is, like, okay, we have this whole public thing, and as I said, you know, as we continue on, but, and then afterwards, you said, well, they brought it forward, so we need the continuance. But I think, even though we might have brought it in the beginning, we still have to have this public hearing to talk about the bylaws anyways.
Yeah.
So I don't really necessarily know that they need to authorize that, you know, continuance.
Yeah, they do, because, because he brought it first, and it's his, so he has, I, I got, it's not, he just has to say yes, he will. But what I'm saying is that, and I think that we need to get the word out a little bit more, so people do come and see it, we need, I know, oh, I'm just saying, I know, but I think, I may try a little harder to, on this one, to say, there will be two in front of us, you want to kind of see, just seeing what the differences are will help people understand what some of these issues are, because I think sometimes, you know, you see a shade of gray, and you go, oh, that's a nice shade of gray, but then you see it next to another shade of gray, and you're like, oh, that's really dark. You know, and I think that's what people need to see, I think that when they...
Do you have a draft available?
Yeah. Yeah, okay, well, only I seem to have it, that's the thing, but I will, I will get you a copy, if you can play, because Dick has a copy, actually. Um, because, you know, it's different from his, and the use table, he needs to know, but it, it, there are things that are the same, too, he's not, as he said, you know, for one, we're putting medical marijuana, and we're putting those things together. Ours has a lot more definitions, it's a little clearer, I think, it's longer, but it's clearer.
But probably the big difference is where it can take place.
It's the use table.
Well, not only that, but what can happen there, too.
Right.
He's really pushing that we allow that...
Co-location.
The manufacturing, if you will, in the R A district.
Well, co-location, so that it stays in the R A, and they can do the other thing, we're saying we're going to take it out of the R A, and can't do...
Right.
I mean, maybe the co-location in, in the industrial area, I'm not sure.
I didn't know, I thought we were going to, in certain areas, you could grow and distribute, but there was one part of town, I thought maybe it would be just a grow.
Just, right, just grow, and some places, just manufacture, so...
No, I, I think that's...
And that's looking at our town, too, and that's what Chris had the, the, he has the maps for us to look at, what, what it would mean.
I should think that was a fatal mistake, what we did in the beginning, we ought, we should have, if we wanted to expand from the very limited industrial area we had, we should have expanded it down route five and ten, mile or two or whatever, and kept it in...
Just think back how it all happened, then, I was like...
I know, I know.
We're so much cleverer now than we were then.
They led with medical marijuana, though, and that's what we were addressing at that time, it's just the poor old people and the arthritis.
Came apart, after, after that, that recreation thing, and trying to help out the farmers and stuff, that, that's where it all blew up.
Right.
Is there anything else, the other thing, I'm going to say this right now, Paul, if you're listening, come in and sign your campaign finance report municipal form. He's the last one, I signed it, Max is all set.
I'm good.
You're good. I know, he's, Paul's the only one.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then, anything else?
No, I make a motion to adjourn.
Yes, I second it, all in favor?
Aye.